All right, we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Previously from the executive session at six thirty. To start off things with, is there anyone in the public that would like to put input? All right, I do have a request for reading from NORCAM. We would like to formally announce that beginning with the September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, the North Reading School Committee meetings will be cable cast both live and replayed on the Educational Access Channel. This change reflects the recent expansion of our channel lineup with the new Educational Access Channel. Excuse me. Viewers can watch the Educational Access Channel on Comcast, Channel ninety-nine, and Verizon, Vios Channel twenty-eight. The meeting times will remain to be seven PM on Monday and Wednesday evenings as they have been in the past, with other meeting replay times to be announced. For further questions or concerns, please contact NORCAM staff at nine seven eight six six four oh five oh one. Thank you, and that is from Rob Carbone, the Executive Director of NORCAM.
I'd like to add that the latest inside NRPS is up on the NORCAM YouTube channel and probably playing on the, playing on the station occasionally, I would assume. Is that, would that be on ninety-nine also, do you know? Yeah, that'll be on ninety-nine also. I think this year it's a focus on dollars for scholars, right?
That's correct.
This current episode.
Yes, it is, Mr. Webster.
So that's up there also.
Okay. Superintendent Bernard, could you give us the MSBA SSBC update?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman. So as you might expect, there's been a lot going on. It's been, it's been a very busy campus these last couple of weeks, and I'm pleased to report a few things to, to all of you with respect to the, to the building project with an emphasis around the, the new North Reading Middle School. The binder coat of asphalt paving at the lower parking lot, the portion of the parking area that was adjacent to the old high school and the access road was completed during the week of August seventeenth. Not in your, noted in your packet is that it's anticipated that some striping, line striping and such is going to take place tentatively this Thursday.
John, can I ask a question on that parking lot?
Sure.
So, we're gonna be able to use that for fall activities down there, and then it'll become a permanent parking lot after that, right? They'll do whatever they have to, put a, put the final coat of hot top on.
And, and yes, and right, that portion of the lot is gonna stay as a binder coat only with some temporary striping on it.
Right, okay.
Because the lot configuration eventually will be different than it is now.
Right, right.
It extends further out, but you remember we, we fought a little bit for getting the seventy parking spaces.
Well, I give Mr. Bowers a lot of credit on that. He pushed.
Yes, he did.
Long and hard for that, and it won't take care of all of our needs down there, but I think it's gonna be extremely helpful if you combine that with batch parking and we.
And what we have on the site itself, correct?
Right, right.
It's binder now, but it would be, they're gonna have some construction traffic on it.
Sure.
Various times, and there's no sense putting the permit down in terror.
Right, right.
No, and you're right. I think, you know, Mr. Bowers was very, I think, influential in moving that along. We were able to, the middle school administration was very good about kind of coordinating off an area of their parking lot late in the school year, about three weeks earlier than school got out, to allow work to begin there sooner, so that we were able to have, as you say, the parking spaces for fall activity. So it's, it's, it's a good situation. The final coat of asphalt paving outside of the main plaza area and the area north of the central office is now complete. Landscaping continues in earnest throughout the site. There are, I couldn't even venture to guess how many, how many plants, but some really beautiful mass plantings going on, and work continues as recent as today and will continue this week. Fencing and lighting around the tennis court complex is nearly complete. All of the concrete plazas have been poured. The last one took place late last week. The front of the school particularly is shaping up to be, you know, just a real, a real showpiece. The team room building was available for use today, I'm pleased to report that. So that, that smaller locker room facility down at the, at the turf field has been turned over to, to the school department for use by our students as, as recent as today. The middle school move, if you, you know, for those of you who, who came in the school today and walked down Main Street, it looked, it was transformed from last Thursday. We had a very successful move. Really, two, two exhaustive days on, on Thursday or Friday of last week, both with the, the moving company that has been working with us on this, on the few moves that we've gone through here in North Reading, as well as our own custodial staff just did an outstanding job Thursday, Friday, and then today to, to, to clear Main Street, move equipment and resources and materials into the middle school. So it's, it's gone very well, and we're ready for our, kind of our first big opportunity tomorrow with the high school freshman orientation and the first of our two-day new teacher orientation. So the school looks, school campus looks in good shape for, for those two activities tomorrow. Just for your information as well, and for the public, the, the main gym and the auxiliary gym will be receiving their cleaning and an application of a sealer coat on this Friday, August the twenty-eighth. The move of the North Reading Middle School commenced, as I said. Central office is tentatively scheduled to begin moving sooner than we anticipated. We're actually going to start, start moving this Thursday, the twenty-seventh. So if things go according to plan, and I have no reason to think that they won't, we're going to move the central office operations in a phased, phased way. We're gonna start with the pupil personnel services office on Thursday. We're gonna start with the business office then on, on Friday, and the assistant superintendent and the superintendent's offices on, on Monday and Tuesday. So again, if all goes according to plan, we're looking, we're kind of targeting like September first or so to be, to be in our new home. We're all very excited about that in the central office, and I think we're, we're looking forward to not having to pack and move anymore. We've had our fill, but it's, we've, people have been very good about keeping their eye on the prize. It's, you know, quite honestly, it's, it's been very exciting. As I said to some of you earlier tonight, there's just a lot of energy, a lot of positive energy going on right now. People have really pitched in well. The secondary school building committee meeting tomorrow night, I think when people walk in, if they haven't been on the site or in the building really for any more than a week, I think they're gonna see just an awful lot, an awful lot of change, both outside and inside. So it's all good. That's all I have on that, Madam Chairman.
I just wanted to mention that the trophy cabinets.
Yes.
Are absolutely stunning, and they're filled to the gills already, so.
Couple of questions?
Yes.
Or, John, is this a good time for you to just remind people, we can get it in the paper, on the date for the middle school orientation?
Yes, I have that in my supplemental report.
Okay, maybe you can do it now and repeat it at the end of the meeting.
Sure, I'd be happy to, yeah. No, I'd be happy to. The, and I think it's good, the more we get the word out, the better. There was actually a nice, nice little story about the middle school open houses on the patch, too. So Dan, if you're so inclined to get it in the paper again, and for the public, it's, the open house for the middle school students is scheduled for Wednesday, September second, and there's going to be, Ms. O'Connell and Mr. Maloney are gonna host a grade six-only segment from nine to eleven AM. Again, this is Wednesday, September second, and then the seventh and eighth graders will be, will be invited in for an optional open house from twelve to two. So both, both sessions on Wednesday, September second.
And I actually have two questions. One of the gating factors here on getting the school open, it's great the construction's going well and everything's moving along, is furniture deliveries. How are we doing there? We?
Furniture delivery has gone very well. We've, I would say furniture has started to arrive as far back as a week ago Thursday, which I think might have been like the thirteenth of August. And it's, some days is a heavy load, other days, you know, we get one, kind of a, one, you know, a number of one particular item, for example, teacher desks, you know, they might have all come on one day. We are still waiting for, for furniture, but all indications are that by the end of this week, we should have everything we need. There's a lot has been delivered. And you have to remember, too, that some items that were purchased for the high school were purchased for the middle school because we bought them in, in say bulk, and they had been in storage. So a lot of that furniture was taken out of the storage that, you know, it's been in for say the last year.
Okay.
And so we had a lot of that here, too, but there still has been an awful lot of new deliveries over the last week, week and a half.
Thanks.
I don't, I don't anticipate any prob, there's certainly no indications right now there's any problems with any furniture.
Great. The other thing, last thing I would say, the high school looks unbelievable. The Main Street looks like you could put on a pair of ice skates and skate down it, it's so shiny.
It does.
The floor looks great. I think part of it is, we have such great natural lighting in there that it just makes everything.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it looks, it's, I know it's only a year old, but it looks brand, brand new, like we haven't used the school before. The whole school looks that way, the high school.
It does. No, I'm gonna speak a little bit about facilities as part of my report tonight, but you're right. I mean, people have, people have done a great job, they really have.
Anyone else? Okay. Next.
And the old school is coming down.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
The old school's coming down.
Kind of saw the outside of the beginning.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
You, you notice, just an aside, you notice that the brick is being taken off the exterior. That will be recycled in one way along with the other parts, all the parts are being recycled as part of the process. That's a part of the lead certification.
Right.
How we get points for that kind of thing.
Help us get two percent more on our reimbursement.
Well, we, we're pretty well assured of that situation.
Right.
What we're looking at today is leads instead of silver, which is the two points.
Gold, right, yeah.
We're looking at perhaps gold.
Right.
Promising, but.
I don't think it gives us any more points, though, unfortunately. Just makes it shinier.
I will say, if you don't mind, it's just, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Webster. I did have occasion to get down to the site last Tuesday when the demolition had begun, and it was, it was a stranger feeling than I anticipated, to be really honest with you. It was, it was, I stood outside with Wayne Hattaker, the supervisor of buildings and grounds, and I looked around, and it was, I posted some pictures and comments on our Twitter page, but I didn't get, I got a feeling that I didn't expect to get when I, when I looked at the building and got, you know, sneaked inside a little bit and took a picture of the gymnasium, which had been pretty well stripped, but that school served us well. And, you know, it was, it was, I think a lot of people formed some really good memories in that building, but.
Almost sixty years.
Yeah, you know, it served us well, but, yeah, it's a lot, lot, awful lot of good excitement around, around what's to come, for sure.
So was it bittersweet?
I don't know if I would say it was bittersweet, because the, I just, I think we, those of us that, you know, lived and worked and learned in that building knew what its, what its trouble spots were, but I, I think, I just, like I said to you, a feeling came over me that I didn't expect to get, particularly when I walked in and saw what it looked like, and that the gym had pretty well been stripped, and I just, you know, that, because it was right close to the door is why it was the gym that I saw, and I just thought about, you know, a lot of the nice things that went on in there, you know, celebratory things, and, you know, a lot happens in a gymnasium, you know. Sometimes you have graduation in there when the, when the weather's not good, or, you know, you know, state championships go on in there, and Cal champions, and just a lot of good stuff. And it was, yeah, I just, I, I thought to myself from, oh, this is a little sad, yeah, it was. So I guess it was a little bittersweet.
One of the things that you, you gain with age is you get a perspective on these things. And I have a, a saying that I bring to, actually, I use it all the time with one of my cousins who's about my age. That change is the only constant in our lives.
That's true.
As oxymorons as that sounds. Change happens all the time.
All right, I see Mr. Foreman, and he is up next to propose a high school trip to Walt Disney.
Thank you. It's that time when we travel again for adjudication, both the band, the chorus, and, okay. Thank you, Mel.
I don't need no microphone. No, but that's okay. After being out on the field all last week with band camp, it's, I don't have much voice, but, and that was bittersweet to wa, it's like watching, I was watching the bricks getting stripped while we were down on the field, and I'm like, it actually is happening, you know? That it got to that point, and it's gonna go away, so, but great facility here, which I constantly thank the community for giving us this wonderful facility for teaching and learning to happen here in North Reading. And speaking of teaching and learning, historically, the performing arts department at the high school, we travel to an adjudicated festival. We've traveled to Virginia Beach, we've gone to Toronto, Annapolis, twice since I've been here, and we do those trips every other year. Three years ago was the last time we did a large trip. And then we go, on the off years, we would go to New York for an overnight to see Broadway shows and do some master classes in New York, just Saturday overnight into Sunday, and then come back. But we're kind of, one of the things we've done is that, three years ago, we went to Walt Disney for master classes from Disney staff with a group of students. We were still rebuilding the program, is which now we have about a little over thirty-five kids in the band at the high school now, growing from fifteen just a few short years ago. And we didn't have enough students three years ago to do an adjudicated festival, so we went down to Walt Disney, we did master classes as well as the amusement parks and worked with Disney staff. So we are proposing to go back to Disney for a big trip, but now, along with master classes done by Disney staff, we're gonna do an adjudicated festival. They have what's called Disney, Festival Disney, get the wording right, where it's like the other trips that we used to go to, where we would go with the performing groups, chorus, the band, the jazz band, be adjudicated by judges, be clinicked by the judges, one of the judges, for comments and ranking, not rank, rating based on a national scale, which adjudicates our program. And then they make constructive comments to help the program grow and for the students to learn. So Disney has started doing those programs, as well as they are going to, we're gonna take master classes as well from the Disney staff. So we are proposing to go on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh through Sunday, May first, which doesn't interfere with any exam schedules. We're very careful to make sure it doesn't interfere with APs, SATs, and it'll be before MCAS begins, so we'll be back well before that. And it's a four-day trip in which it's open this year to more of our students. Disney staff is putting together master classes for our tech theater students as well, which they're looking forward to. They haven't had anyone request that, and they're very excited about offering those to our students as well, to learn how they build the things that they build down there. So, and it's all behind, like a behind-the-scenes, it's actually, when we did, when, three years ago, we were actually in Epcot Center, but in a soundstage behind everything else, where we actually recorded to Lion King, our voices, we did voice-overs, we did singing, dancing, and they incorporated into the animation. We came home with the CD from that. So we did that in the course of a three-hour workshop, and it was really cool, and it's something the kids would always remember. So that is what we are proposing. We have eight staff members as chaperones already lined up to travel with us from the performing arts department, from all the schools. So we're keeping the, the district staff, and my, my wife also was a staff member here at the high school, so. And let's see, so all-inclusive, everything, including airfare, all the meals, staying on the Disney property, and getting everything is approximately, right now, fourteen hundred dollars per student.
Okay. It said eleven fifty.
I'm sorry?
Eleven fifty at the bottom.
I think I have a more updated one, because of, we've added a few more things in there, so it's now gone up to fourteen. It's a little bit more accurate, because that one was gonna think in the end of May, beginning of June.
Okay. I have a question. How do you, so you say you're hoping around fifty students?
Well, we, we base this on, we had seventy students interested before we.
Would you take seventy if seventy wanted to go?
Absolutely.
So that, that was my question.
If there's seventy students who would benefit from this.
You're not gonna let, you're not gonna say, sorry, we're stopping at fifty?
No.
Okay.
No, this was just the approximate numbers. So we've based things on around seventy students. It's not, that's a, a guesstimate, I think we're, we're trying to book about twenty-five rooms, four to a room, so we have, have some wiggle room to make sure that if we have some more kids who want to come, it's open to them to come.
Okay, and you have it here, and you might have an updated version.
Yes.
It says you have currently six North Reading District's staff members to chaperone props.
Yeah, we've added a couple of more.
Oh, so if those extra twenty come, then you have more than.
So, right, because we're trying to keep the, when we went up to seventy students, we want to keep that at least a one to ten ratio.
Okay.
Which I believe is the policy.
Yeah, it has to be that way, yeah.
You know that, Eric knows that.
Yeah, so it's one to ten, so we're right now at better, if we have seventy, we're better than the one to ten, so.
Very good. Sounds amazing.
This is for Michael. This is one of the things that I've asked you before, not just related to this trip, but any trips that we have where we're also gonna try to do fundraising. If it's possible, just so we get an idea, I'm not saying we set, oh, you have to raise this much money, but I'd like to get an idea from all of these trips as to how much money we're, we were able to raise, if the kids are able to raise money. So if there's some kind of reporting, you know, if they raised two thousand, they raised two thousand, they raised a hundred and fifty, they raised, but I think it'd be interesting to see how successful, successful you are, because I know there are other trips in terms of fundraising, what.
Yeah, we do have other overnight trips that the district endorses.
Not, not that that, that has no influence over whether I'm gonna vote for it or not, I'd just like to know how successful we are fundraising. And, and also, you know, what are some of the kind of things we're going to do, because a couple of weeks ago, I was going to Stop and Shop, and there were some cheerleaders collecting money, but I wasn't, I'm sure they're collecting it for the program, but I'd just be interested in knowing, you know, is there any way to know, I've asked this before, is there any way to know ahead of time, we're gonna have cheerleaders out, or we're gonna have people out collecting money?
Like from the booster groups ahead of time?
Yeah. Is there any way that we can get notice on that? Just so we know, just so we know, you know?
Well, part of the new policy, booster support group policy, does ask that these, you know, support organizations submit a list of fundraising activities by the end of September.
Right.
Most of which are submitting them, to me, as part of their application and recognition, which we'll touch upon later. So we are getting a list of ideas and anticipated revenue amounts they hope to, to earn from that activity. So that does exist, and some of the, you know, whether it's, whether, some of the teams are doing it under jurisdiction of the support organization or as part of the team itself, you know, a lot of the coaches do submit fundraising requests that get approved through the principals and then come to, through my office as well, so.
I just wanna make sure that was happening.
It is, I think it is happening.
Okay, great. I think it's a great trip, as we need said, it sounds really fun.
Sounds very good.
I did a similar trip back Magic Music Days.
Hmm, yes.
When I was in high school.
Yeah, I think this is an offshoot of that, a more developed version of the Disney Music Days.
This seems very more, you know, educational center.
Yeah, they're bringing in the, yeah, they're bringing in the nationally-known adjudicators now, they're gonna get in there where concerts sat in an art, in a theater, one of their theaters, and they're gonna be like judged a little bit differently.
Sophisticated.
More sophi, yeah, good, good term, sophisticated than their, their Magic Days, so it's that kind of a festival, which is where we've gone in the past, and they're doing it, so add the other stuff that they have to offer us, so.
Absolutely. Now, you mentioned that some of your students wanted the technical building side of it, and they haven't offered that in the past?
Tech theater, tech theater kids, yeah. They have not. They haven't had anyone request that they're bringing their tech theater kids. Well, we have so many crossovers, you know, band, chorus, tech kids, actors, they do, our kids do every, well, which is good. We make them be involved in every aspect of everything that we do, to make them more well-rounded when they, when they, when they do move on. Unfortunately, they do that to us, they go on to, to college, that they'll have a much more diverse background. So we asked them, can you put something to, do you have a tech class? And they said, well, we don't have one now, but they get, went to their people and said, oh, yeah, this would be great to do, and they got all excited. So they've already put together a nice package of a class workshop that deals just on the technical aspects.
That's wonderful.
That's great.
We're trendsetters. And we've also, Notorious has been invited to sing at one of the park, big events that they have that go on at the park, they've been invited to do a performance, and the marching band has been asked to march in the parade, one of the parades.
Wonderful.
So.
That's really good.
Forgot to mention that. That's kind of important.
Before we get to a vote, I just, I had been talking to Eric because, before the meeting tonight, because back, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago, after we had kind of decimated the music and, the music and theater program in our elementary and middle schools, because of budget reasons, the band almost disappeared. I think you had like fifteen or sixteen people, kids, and it was kids making a really good effort, but when you have that many people, it's almost not a band, because you have one trumpet player, one trombone player, and, you know, four drummers, and, and he told me tonight, as you've mentioned, they're up to thirty-five, now that might not sound a lot, but when you go from fifteen to thirty-five, you've got a full band there. So I'm glad we've been able to, and the arts and music program is growing by leaps and bounds in the elementary and middle school, and that's partly Eric's credit, because I know he's involved with the middle school program, and all our great elementary music teachers and the, Carl Alister and Allison up here, and just all of them, and it's just great to see that, that program growing, because it's, a lot of times, all people see is the sports. They don't see, and sports is great, you know, I love sports, but they don't see the other stuff. And, and I think it's great that the kids have this opportunity to get out to Florida, and we'll get more kids interested as we move forward.
Insufficient funding has long-term implications.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and we, we saw that happen right here, when you drop it off for, and you don't have any. And those kids in between didn't get that piece of their education.
If we thought a few more years with no programs in the elementary, middle schools, we would have had no band.
Would have lost it.
The band would have disappeared.
Zero.
And then trying to, trying to start it again is almost impossible, so.
Well, as I was telling, Mel, we only had one senior last year walk across to play with the band, and that was the last one from, that held, held over from all that problem. And now it's, you know, I have, you know, seven and seven seniors this year, but I have a ton of juniors.
Right.
And sophomores, so it's just getting there, growing up, growing from the bottom up, again.
All right, could I have a motion to accept the trip?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes, four to one, oh, sorry, four to zero. One missing.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Van Zee is not here tonight.
Yes.
He would have voted for the trip.
I think so. He has in the past, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Conley for the budget development schedule.
Thank you. Although it's hard to believe that we're already beginning to start to think a little bit about fiscal two thousand and seventeen budget, we just begin fiscal sixteen. This evening, we did wanna present to you a draft budget development schedule for your review. Not a lot of changes from fiscal two thousand and sixteen, a pretty similar schedule and timeline that we're looking to frame the, the budget conversations and discussion throughout the fiscal year. September would be devoted to capital, our, our large capital improvement plan, we are working on that currently. We would plan to present that plan through the school committee for your review and informational presentation on September fourteenth. We would then prior, you know, bring that plan and the list of projects in priority order back for review and vote on September twenty-eighth, because the capital improvement planning committee is requiring all, all projects be presented by the end of September. So this, this timeline would allow us, although it's tight, would allow us to meet that deadline and allow the, the full school committee to review and, and vet the, the large capital projects before going to the CIPC for review. In October, we would then start to formulate the fiscal two thousand and seventeen budget goals. We actually plan to discuss a draft of those goals on September twenty-eighth, we, we hope to have those ready, and ask for a, an official vote of the budget goals on October fifth. As we move to the end of October, we would work with our administrative team, our principals and our directors, and we would administer what I refer to as the budget workshop, you know, documents and folders, and talk about the requests, and set some, some guidelines know, documents and folders, and talk about the requests, and set some guidelines for the requests and priorities with the principals and directors as an administrative team. Those requests would be due back to myself or the business office just before the Thanksgiving break on November twentieth. This would allow time for, really, the month of December is, I mean, reviewing those requests sort of internally, having some conversations as a central office administrative team, formulating some drafts of the budget at that time, seeing where things are at. And then, you know, those conversations are happening in the month of December into January, where we're formulating, you know, drafts and proposals of the fiscal two thousand seventeen budget. On February twenty-second, that is a school committee meeting, I felt it would be perhaps helpful if we discussed the state budget at that time, by then it would have been released, we would have preliminary chapter seventy numbers, the governor's house one budget, the governor's budget would be released by then, we'd have a conversation about where the state budget is at, chapter seventy, you know, local aid, et cetera, the February twenty-second meeting. On March seventh would be the plan to present the preliminary budget to the school committee, that would mean the budget books would go out in that packet in advance of the March seventh school committee meeting. And then in March and April would be the process of the school committee reviewing the budget and seeking community input. April fourth would be our annual budget public hearing on the fiscal seventeen budget. On April eleventh, we'd have a follow-up discussion regarding any comments and feedback received from the public about the fiscal seventeen budget. April thirteenth, this is a tentative date, I haven't finalized the date with the finance committee yet, but this was similar timeframe over the past couple of years, I would confirm this with the finance committee as we get closer, but I would think April thirteenth, that's a Wednesday evening, I think they meet on Wednesdays, we would look to present our budget to the finance committee. Then April twenty-fifth would be the school committee vote on the recommended budget, that would allow us to meet the timeline of town meeting warrants due on, by May second, and then June sixth, I believe, is the first Monday in June, that would be when town meeting would vote the budget. So pretty similar to a year ago. Any questions or comments?
Move to accept the fiscal two thousand seventeen budget development schedule?
Second. All in favor with, or if there's any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to just continue? Sure, so we did want, the next piece on the agenda is an update on policy, LEC, relations with booster and support organizations. As we know, we have worked on this revised policy, and last year was, essentially, once the policy was adopted in October, early November of last fiscal year, we really went through a process of a lot of public outreach, a lot of communication to the public on what the policy was, on things to be aware of, on, on some of the procedures and requirements we were going to ask, and regulations we were going to ask our support in parent associations and support organizations that we've worked with for a number of years to comply and submit to, to certainly the administration and to the school committee. So we certainly had gone through a year process of doing that, we had some informational meetings, we even had a workshop in April that I thought was very helpful, where certainly a consultant came out and presented many of, certain, you know, regulations that a lot of these support organizations need to be aware of in terms of meeting requirements for, to comply with, with the IRS requires, what the, you know, Department of the State requires, as well as what the Attorney General's office may require. So essentially, this summer, what's been happening is, a lot of these support organizations have been submitting the application of recognition, which is appendix B of that policy, to my office, and attaching the, their bylaws, maybe a brief mission statement of their intended purpose, and then in some cases, they've been listing their fundraising activities that they plan to conduct over the course of the next school year. So we've sort of given them sort of a deadline at sort of the end of the summer to try to do that. I would say the response over the last several weeks has been very, very positive, we've started to get these in by many of the support organizations. To date, I have information from eleven organizations that we've worked with, received a couple today, some of which are incomplete, I've had conversations with some of these organizations, they're aware of that, and they're, they're working at completing it. But essentially, Mr. Bernard and myself plan to present to the full school committee on the September fourteenth meeting, the full list of the various organizations that we've received an application of recognition for, and we hope at that time that certainly what they've submitted to me is certainly consistent with the, certainly the mission and the purpose of the policy and of the school district and the school committee, and we can move to accept that application of these organizations, and we would continue to have that, again, that working relationship with. So I think I was certainly pleased with the response that we got, certainly over the last couple of months. I think certainly Mr. Bernard, over the course of several, several months from the spring through the summer, has done a great job communicating and sending out reminders, and I've met with a few organizations over the course of the summer, they had questions, I'm meeting with one again on Thursday as, as well, but we're certainly hopeful that almost every organization that we've had a relationship with, all the parent associations at all the schools, a lot of the sport organizations, the music boosters, associations at the middle school and high school, are all submitting and complying with, with the policy and doing what we've asked them to do.
Can you refresh my memory, if they've already applied once, like, say, the parent organization of the elementaries, is it like a one-page, yeah, everything's status quo, or if they have a turnover of, you know, the different people leads, and then they have to send a whole new thing, or is it just?
So it's, we're just really asking to do this once, what we're, what we've communicated in the policy is if there's significant changes, turnover in offices, or change to their mission for whatever reason, that they submit a renewal application, and just let us know that, but if everything is kind of status quo and the same, then this is only a process that they would have to go through once.
Thank you. So this is the initial process?
This is the initial, so we're starting from scratch, and we're asking, so everyone has to kind of comply initially and submit this application and paperwork, and then they're going forward, there could be a new organization that develops, or there could be a need for a renewal application any given year if things are changing significantly.
So do you envision every year having them to, you know, fill out some sort of renewal?
I, I, I think for the most part, certainly the mission and the intended purpose stays very consistent and the same, I think some of these organizations may, I realize, do change over offices, given the nature of what they're doing, so maybe every other year, a couple of years, I may get, we may receive a renewal application that just is a notification that we've changed our board, we changed our offices, there's a new contact information.
So these organizations will know when they need to do that?
They will, yeah. I think, we've certainly communicated that if there's, if there's a change, a significant change in that manner, just, you know, don't, don't need to submit bylaws and everything again, but just the front cover sheet, letting us know who the change in offices are and who the new contact information is, is helpful, so.
I have a question, somewhat related. Is there been any indication of the formation of a new athletic boosters group at all, or?
There has not.
There has not, we have not seen that.
No, we have not.
We still have all the individual sports boosters group, but nothing for the?
Well, and even, I think, I think it's, and certainly, Michael is much, much more hands-on with this than I am, but I, I think it's fair to say that we, we, it's been a trickle of the groups that are coming in, but we did have an athletic booster group for one particular sports team make a recent inquiry, and I, my, my belief is, and my hope is, that as we get into the, you know, the swing of the school year, and people get into kind of the school year mode, and they start to think more about this, and also, I think there'll be, you know, those grassroots conversations when people want to do something and, and start to ask questions of either the principal of that building, or, or me, or Michael, and, you know, what do they need to do, that it'll happen. Because it has been a little bit slow in, in people responding to the, to the request, but it picked up a little bit in August, you know, I think we had had a conversation, a quick question was asked, I think by Mrs. Kopke at the, at the July meeting, but we continued to send out that email reminder, and a couple of more came in. So there hasn't been a, a request or a, I should say, there hasn't been a, an interest expressed by any larger kind of umbrella booster group to support all athletics. I think what we're going to see, likely to see, is probably more for a particular team. At least that's where I think it is right now. That could, certainly could change.
I will say, I think there is a lot of helpful information, the presentation that was given in April by a consultant that came in, I think she did an excellent job.
She did.
The feedback that I received from the organizations that were there, and there was about twenty-five or so individuals attended, was very, very positive, and that, that presentation that she gave, which talks about, you know, how do you formulate, you know, how do you go about doing different fundraises and so forth, and comply, is posted on the, on the website, in the business office, under other information, it's there, it can be accessed. And we did actually video the presentation, and we are looking to get copies of that, that video that could be accessed as well. So it, it was definitely a very informative, very?
Was it on the website?
Yeah, that's the goal.
The video's already on the website?
We're looking to get it on the website.
That's the goal, is to have it, we had it recorded by a student, high school student, and we're hoping to get that posted.
Great.
Yeah.
I will say that I think, you know, while I have the microphone and it's, it's on TV, is that I think at first glance, it, it, it looks very intimidating.
Sure.
The process, the more recent email reminders that have gone out from, from me, Michael and I actually kind of tweaked that a little bit the last two or three times we sent it to make, to kind of explain what the, actually, I think we actually identified the documents that people need to?
Sure.
We were, we're trying to get the message out that, you know, I think two things, one is it may not be as, as involved and time-consuming or as intimidating as, as people may think, and also that, you know, to come in and meet, come in and meet with Michael, and he'll walk you through it.
Sure.
You had an appointment last week, that, you know, I think if people do that, they might, they might be less, might be less fearful or less intimidated by what we're asking them to do, and I think they'll understand clearly, you know, why it is we're asking them to do that.
And the most of that is, is required by law anyway.
Correct. I was just going to say that if you don't have the right documents or government approval, state approvals, they shouldn't be raising money anyway.
And it's, it's in their best interests as well.
Correct.
The folks that are involved, as well as the district, of course.
It protects them, it protects us.
Absolutely.
It protects the students and the programs that we have.
It's for all the right reasons, clearly.
Right.
How many total do you expect, how many total support organizations or groups?
I'm looking, I have a list in front of me on my computer screen here that has, there's eleven organizations that have submitted or expressed interest, who are close to having a completed application.
Okay, so what's the total?
These are the eleven that I'm sort of aware about as being the major?
We have all this, most of this.
Well, I think, I think it's a hard question to answer, because it's a very fluid number, and I'll go back to my, my days as the high school principal, you would get a team, for example, because a lot of these are, you know, athletic, you have the school parent organizations, you have music boosters and such, and then you start to get into the athletic world, and you may get a particular year where there's a couple of parents that are just really gung-ho and want to, want to really do something special and get, get heavily involved, so that might, a group might crop up that you didn't anticipate, but I think my experience would tell me that, you know, I, I, there's, I would expect that we will have more than those eleven. I would think if there were another, as many as maybe a half a dozen other athletic teams or more, that, and that's just one example, but I think that number certainly has the potential to grow. But from, from those groups that we largely get contributions from, I think now, as I sit in the superintendent's seat, and over the last eleven months, when gifts come in, I think we're in a good place in terms of those organizations being covered with having already done the work.
Because we had tennis.
Is that a fair statement?
It is. We had tennis, I don't know if we have tennis boosters anymore, but that was the case.
No, I don't think.
There was a parent, there were a couple of parents that were really driving that.
That's right.
So we've had some, lacrosse, we did, I don't know if we do now, so I think that's a good point, and that's where why?
It can ebb and flow in a given year, based on the level of involvement that parents have.
Why I asked about the overall athletic boosters is, I think that's where that used to come in handy, when you have teams that don't have?
Smaller teams without their own group, you're right, it did, they could, they could benefit from that.
Right.
So what I think that does is it causes, you know, it, it causes the district to look inward and say, well, okay, because, you know, we, we go through that rotation of uniforms and such, that's why that kind of a plan is good, because it doesn't, it doesn't leave out a particular group who may not have the benefit, or might be one of the kind of smaller sports and may not, or, you know, maybe one of the less expensive sports that doesn't have the support.
Like cross country or tennis, where expenses, mainly travel.
Right, I mean, we have a very, very vibrant, active music boosters group, you know, so they're, they're kind of on their own and do, you know, a lot of, they've, they've already filed, and so it's, you know, they, they support that group, and I think that's one of the ones that's been like longstanding, it's not one of the examples I was just talking about a minute ago, that's been forever, really. So, I just, if I could, Madam Chairman, I just, you know, Michael has done an extensive amount of work on this for well over a year now, and, and it's really, you know, I just, I want to make it, I want to make it known while he's sitting right here, that, you know, this has, this has been an undertaking that he, he has really done a very nice job with, and I think it's only going to, you know, as I said earlier, it's going to only benefit everyone that's involved with supporting the district and the district itself. And I want to emphasize, as I've tried to do in the email communications to, to folks, that, you know, we, and I know the, the committee feels the same way, are just so grateful and really so dependent on the amount of donations that, that we receive, and, and, you know, I just, that point can't be, can't be overemphasized. So thank you, Michael.
Yes, thank you. All right, Superintendent Bernard, would you like to bring to the table the athletic?
I would, thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Webster if he wouldn't mind chiming in to here too, a little bit as a, as a member of the athletic subcommittee. So essentially, this, this subject of a potential third level of girls volleyball, or volleyball, I should say, has been a topic of discussion at the past two athletic subcommittee meetings, and it came up, because the athletic director, Dave Johnson, had a, as he does annually, has a meeting with grade eight students, and goes down with coaches and talks to the eighth graders about athletic programs at the high school, and to try to build interest and involvement, and in doing so, this past spring, felt as though the signups that he had, initial signups in the spring were larger than maybe he had thought. So it, it came up at an athletic subcommittee meeting in June, it came up again in, in August, and essentially, what, if the committee is so apt to do so, is right now, as of today, there are thirty students who have expressed interest in volleyball. That number is, is likely to grow through this week, okay? Historically, for the last, I asked the athletic director to put together some numbers, we, we've been in, in the twenties, twenty students in the last four years. Prior to that, in the two thousand ten, eleven school year, there were thirty-four students, and the year prior, there were forty-two. Each of those two years, two thousand nine, ten, and two thousand ten, eleven, there was a third level.
We had a freshman program, those guys, anyway, yeah.
Correct. So if, again, if the committee is inclined, because we won't meet again until the start of the, the start of the season would have already begun, the school committee won't have met again until that season has begun, if the level of involvement and interest rises to a point where the athletic director believes, and the coaching staff believes that, you know, we, we would like to introduce a third level, and thus a third coach for a freshman volleyball team, would you be in a position to endorse that, should those numbers dictate it?
And let me add that, that the belief is, last year, we had to cut several girls, and the problem is, when you cut freshmen, they don't come back out again, so you're losing the future of your program. The belief is, if we, if we don't cut anybody and we add a freshman coach, the fees, the additional fees will cover the cost of the coach. So if you have a freshman team with twelve kids on it, you're going to collect forty-eight hundred dollars or thereabouts, depending on, you know, some reduced and whatever fees, but you're going to collect between four and five thousand dollars, which would cover the cost of the coach. So, you know, as we, we talked about it at the athletic subcommittee, basically, we, I said, I'd bring it forward, and the motion would be to approve contingent upon having and, having the required numbers, contingent upon the athletic director believing we have the required numbers that would require, that would require a third coach for a freshman team.
Right. Yeah, I think if it's not a number that justifies it, and it ends up meaning that some, a small number of students do unfortunately get cut, I think that that would be a decision
Right, if we had?
That would still need to be made.
Because you would need to have a certain amount at the freshman level.
Yes, yeah, you have to have probably at least?
To sustain it, to make it, make it a viable alternative.
Ten probably, because it's six-six on the court at all times, so, and if we don't have that, then we, we may have?
It wouldn't make sense to do that, right.
Cut players, because we, so that, that would be my motion, to approve the hiring of a third volleyball coach contingent on us having the numbers required for that, for the program to expand.
All right, any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, sorry?
Aye.
All right, motion passes four to zero. I'm sorry?
Cliff. I, I will add too, that we're not going to vote on this tonight, but I know there's been several requests for other coaches. One of the biggest needs is track, and especially the winter, and the winter track program, or winter and spring track and field, and? and field. And we'll probably be, um, bringing that forward. Again, we've, we have so many, I think we're close to a hundred, especially in the, in the spring.
I think that's true.
And I think we only have three coaches.
Yeah, I think if the numbers continue in the direction as they have the last few years, I think, I mean, we've had conversations already at Athletic Subcommittee, I think it's very likely we would, we would be having that conversation with you, similar to the one we just had.
Right.
And the hope, it's, it's actually a good problem to have.
Yeah, I want to assure those coaches that it is on our, on our radar.
Yes.
Uh, the coaches of track.
I have a question in regards to that. If, you know, hiring a third coach for volleyball is contingent upon the amount of people that would be there, how does that play with track? I mean, you have so many more people, students to a coach, you know what I'm saying?
Track's a different kind of, because it's, it's, a lot of it's an individual sport. So you can have fewer coaches on a track team. One of the things that we talked about at Athletic Subcommittee was, there are some JV meets that we're not able to send our JVs to, kids who wouldn't race the varsity, because we don't have enough coaches. So one of the things we might be able to do with another coach is to bring kids to a JV meet, whereas now we don't.
Right.
You need all three coaches at the varsity meet. So we might be able to get a group of students that could participate. Whereas now, they're practicing really hard, but they don't-
They don't.
Sometimes they don't have an opportunity to, to compete every, at every meet.
And I think too, some of this is a little bit of a logistical thing that we wouldn't have if it weren't a fall sport at this time of year. If, we will know the track numbers-
Right.
And we will have a more definitive track number to be able to say to the school committee. The Athletic Subcommittee would have that information to say to you prior to the season starting. And we'd have the definitive number. This one's a little different because of the summer leading into the fall season. You'll be, we'll be able to say to you more definitively that-
Yeah, we have a hundred and twenty.
There's a hundred and two students signed up for track and the third coaches, or excuse me, the additional coaches, um, was recommended.
When, when are the signups for volley, like when does it volleyball officially start, as far as?
So that the, the official day is Thursday.
Okay.
So that's why people dribble in, you know, kind of spring, summer, without a definitive number. Whereas when you have the, you have the preseason meetings during school, when all of the students are here, you, you're able to capture a more definitive number in a quicker, you know, really in, in, in a much shorter span of time than we have for the fall season.
For Thursday, you should know.
Thursday is the big day.
Would we be able, would we have to advertise this? Would we be able to bring in a coach quickly enough?
I mean, that's, we believe, Dave believes so, you know, he believes that we can do that with some, some staff that we may have.
Right, we have staff who has experience, right.
It's kind of been out there a little bit, so, you know, there's some, but it may or may not happen, we just don't know. And we're not going to go forward with it if it's going to mean, you know, not a viable, if it's not the right thing to do. But if, if it is, then the vote you just took would, would, you know, would allow for that. I think that's a good thing. So thank you.
Onto the really fun stuff. Could I have a motion to accept the executive session minutes of July twenty-seventh?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Um, the open meeting of July twenty-seventh, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I threw them, they look really clean. So I move to accept the open meeting for July twenty-seventh.
Second.
Questions or concerns? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. And there is no budget update at this time. And so I turn back to Superintendent Bernard for staffing.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. So, uh, in your packet is a list, um, to date of, of new hires, uh, for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Um, it's a lengthy list. I'm happy to say that the, um, the administrators and, um, in, in many cases, uh, staff that they have involved in the interview, uh, process, have worked very diligently over the last several weeks. And we have moved, um, very, very, uh, methodically through hiring a number of people, um, to join us here in North Reading for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. So, um, I think the list is fairly self-explanatory, with some district personnel. Um, I think there are six in total that you see there. I do want to call your attention, you, you see only two, uh, digital learning specialists listed there. That's because, um, the third, um, new position is, was from an inter, was an internal hire. So that person doesn't show as a new staff. Um, her replacement, however, does show as a, uh, computer robotics teacher at the middle school. So, um, nineteen professional, uh, teachers, um, across the, uh, five schools and seven paraprofessionals. We have, uh, approximately five, uh, positions, I think vacant at this time. There was a, actually a high school teacher, um, interviewed and has been recommended to me for appointment as recent as today. So that would add actually a twentieth person among the teachers. But um, a lot of new folks, um, a lot of new faces. And we have our, I'll speak a little bit later about our new, new teacher orientation program, but they have all been invited to participate, um, in the two-day new teacher orientation program starting, um, starting tomorrow.
So that's, is that a requirement, or?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It is a requirement for all, um, all teachers. It's optional for paraprofessionals and long-term substitutes. But we, I can tell you that we have a number of them who have, um, who have indicated that they will be here, which is nice. So we'll have a, we'll have a large group tomorrow.
It's interesting to see a couple, uh, names of recent NRHS graduates.
Yeah, there's a couple, um, Laura Babcock, Matthew Devecchia, who have, uh-
Jill Malanson.
Jill Malanson, a paraprofessional, right? Yeah, so those, those are all graduates of our system. So it is nice.
He's a couple, a graduate with my daughter.
I-
They're teaching here? Wait, what's going on?
Yeah, it is, it is definitely a, right, you know what? So it's good, it's good. I think it's a great thing to see, to see our graduates want to come back and work in the district. I think it's wonderful, so.
Well, speaks a lot-
Yeah, yeah.
...for our community, and I guess.
So, it is, it's good, it's good, so.
And one, John, one thing to point out is, um, I think about nine of these positions or around nine are new. We have the five-point whatever at the high school.
See, the five-point-two, I believe, new positions-
And then the digital learning specialists, right?
Digital learning and, and, uh, you have digital learning paraprofessionals through, through the reorg.
So I just, it's not like we're having to replace twenty-five people here.
Correct.
A lot of new positions.
There are some new positions, there are, you know, there were some, um, vacancies to be filled from people through attrition.
Right.
Um, retirement, resignation, that kind of thing. Um, so, no, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, I, obviously I meet, uh, with everybody who gets recommended for employment, professional staff, um, come through the superintendent's office. And it's, uh, it's been fun for me this year for the first time to go through that for, for people across the district. You know, when I was the high school principal, naturally I would, I would interview those folks. But it's been, it's been nice to talk with people about the district from the, from the K to twelve perspective. And I'm really, I'm really pleased with, um, the, the good and hard and thorough work that the, that the administrators have undertaken to, um, to put this together, so.
So as far as the vacancies go, are we close to filling them?
Yes, yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned. Yeah. And I think my last communication out to, to parents and the staff was that I, you know, fully expect a full complement of people, um, to be in place. Um, in fact, I think one of the listings, as I, as I kind of visualized the school spring postings, one of them was for, uh, school nurse substitutes. One was for contracted services, I think, in occupational therapy. So those aren't even real, you know, true positions that we need to have in place in September. I think that's down to three. And like I said, one was recommended for hiring just today. Okay?
All right.
That's a little staffing update for you.
Thank you. And on to bids and donations. I have a donation of three hundred from an anonymous donor. If I could have a motion to accept?
Move it, oh, go ahead.
Motion to accept, three hundred dollar donation. And a second?
Second.
Motion on the table to accept with gratitude for three hundred dollar donation, once again, from an anonymous donor to support the cost of the field trips for the summer special education program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. The motion passes four to zero. I have another one. For two thousand seven hundred and fifty, if I could have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Um, I have a motion on the table to accept the donation of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from Fit Revolution on behalf of the proceeds raised from this year's Hornets Hustle Road Race. The check is to be divided equally among the five schools, with the batch elder receiving the additional two fifty for having had the most participants. So with gratitude, if I could have a, oh. Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Did I say that weird?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Motion passes, uh, four to zero. All right. For the subcommittee updates, uh, the secondary school building committee, did you want to add anything more than what we just talked about earlier in the?
No, it's getting pretty routine at this point.
Yeah.
And we're down to the, to the nitty-gritty of just fitting people in the spaces.
That's true. It's getting exciting.
Very.
It is.
Okay. Um, Mel, the Athletic Subcommittee?
Couldn't find my notes, but I think I have pretty good recall here. We, um, we got a final look at the plaques, actually, that are now up on the, on the wall. They're above where the, um, Hall of Fame will eventually be, North Reading Athletic Hall of Fame. And they're state champion plaques. We, I think you had thirteen, you said?
I believe it's thirteen, yeah.
And, uh, those are now up. Um, we are still, and I don't know if there's an update on this, but, uh, we're still in search of a, I believe we're close to a, finding a home for our home hockey games. Um, we no longer will be playing our games in Reading-
Correct.
-because they did not have the ice time for us. I believe we're, we're looking at a bunch of different rinks. I don't, I don't know if we found one yet.
I honestly don't know if the decisions have been made.
I think we're getting close.
But I think there are, there were three, maybe four possibilities-
Right.
-that the Athletic Director was still working through.
Right.
We were more hopeful of a couple than we were of others, but, um-
We'll have a home, we're just not sure where that home will be, so.
We've got some good influential people working with us to try to make that happen too, so. Yeah, I expect it'll be resolved.
We discussed the batting cage again for the gym, and we don't have to make a decision on that right away. Um, we, I think we pretty much, uh, discarded the idea of getting one of the, um, automatic batting cages that-
Correct.
-raise up and down with push of a button. Once we saw the cost of those, um, that became cost prohibitive. Um, so we're looking at, um, a manual one that you kind of, kind of hangs there and you just kind of pull ropes and, and set it up as needed.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have to make a decision on that. And I believe the plan was hopefully get that funded by outside groups, not funded by the school department. So, um, you know, Little League softball, uh, Little League baseball and softball.
Diamond Club.
Diamond Club and other, other groups. So, um, I think, I think we'll be okay there. And the cost of the manual one is a lot less than the cost of the automated. It just, it just didn't make sense. Plus, the one we would have to buy wasn't going to be long enough, uh, for that, for what we really needed. It wasn't, we would have to buy two of them. So it kind of would have been, really been cost prohibitive, so.
What sort of protection goes along with those, um, those contraptions?
Some kind of, um, something they put on the floor.
Are you talking about for the floor protection?
Yeah.
Yeah. It has like a-
Because that was a concern in Wilmington-
Right.
-with their baseball.
Right.
That they could only use certain kinds of balls.
Right.
And, you know, that sort of thing.
Right.
And it wasn't as useful as they thought it was gonna be-
You can't use the real baseballs.
-because of the damage to the new gym.
Yeah, you can't use the real baseballs.
You can't use an actual baseball.
Or softball. It's-
Right.
It's a rubber type ball. Same kind of like lacrosse has a practice ball for indoors too. Um, and the coaches, I think, are aware of that.
Right. It's not, you know, the idea isn't that you're trying to distance hit the ball as much as like working on the swing.
Right.
Or, you know, that type of thing, to connect.
But some sort of protective-
Yeah, they have, they have the floor.
-will be part of it, okay.
That's part of the unit.
Okay.
And then we talked about the volleyball coach, we talked about the team building, um, and then a little more discussion on the turf field. But right now, there's-
Yeah, the idea is still out there.
Right.
You know, the whole, or the interest, I should say, among the Athletic Subcommittee. And we're just, we're, we're hoping that that's a seed that germinates in the community somewhere.
I'd say a turf field, actually, to be more clear, where the practice field will be.
Correct.
The big concern there is that a, a natural grass practice field, no matter what you do, if you have the best irrigation system in the world, it just disintegrates because it's used all the time. I mean, we saw that with the practice field we used to have.
Absolutely.
It, we'd have grass and a month later, the grass was gone.
And there is no irrigation planned, right?
Well, we, there's no irrigation planned.
We, we, there is no irrigation planned, that's correct.
Right, but that's a, if, if we can't get, if we can't generate interest for a turf field.
The idea would be to-
I, that would be our next move.
Try to fund that.
To fund irrigation up, up for that, in the softball field, so. And I think that's about it, John.
Yeah, those seem to be the major topics, yeah. The volleyball coach and we talked about, so.
Yeah.
I will tell you too, that is, just as a quick aside, that, um, the signup numbers as of right now, and again, there's still, you know, these next few days do generate more student interest. But we are, uh, over six, over three hundred students, uh, for the fall season again. So that's kind of become the norm.
Good participation.
Yeah, it is. I think it was like three-ten, according to the Athletic Director today, three hundred and ten students. So it's good, it's good. It's real good.
The subcommittee schedule for-
Oh, you know what?
Yep.
We had a finance planning.
Oh, yes, we did.
Oh, yeah, we did, yeah.
Nothing, nothing major. Um, we talked about the, I saw this coming up in the superintendent's report, the little school roof project, um, which will be on the town meeting warrant in October. Um, as usual, at this time, the budget's gonna be really tight next year. You know, a lot of times that improves. There's a lot of things going on with chapter seventy. Hopefully the formula is gonna get looked at and the state will start funding what a real, um, budget should be for a school district and not the low level that they're at now.
Mm-hmm.
And, and all communities will benefit from that. Um, I think that was the main, the two main issues.
Yeah, they looked for an update on the status of the school building project.
All right, we made, we brought an update on the school building project. And I think, let me see if there's any, we talked about three-year budgets.
Yeah, for the next meeting.
For the next meeting. I, I think for us, a three-year budget, since eighty-two or eighty-three percent of our budget is personnel, that part of the three-year budget is easy.
Yeah.
Is, we have all our contracts in place, fixed for the next two or three years. Um, and then they also asked Michael and John to come back and see if there were any additional costs that we need to talk about with the town for operating the two new schools. I think we've included most of them, but-
Yeah.
There may be one that we look for in a, uh, capital improvement plan request in terms of maintenance slash snow removal.
Yeah.
I know that's being looked at right now.
It is.
And, uh, but I think, and those were the, um, I don't think there were any other major items that we discussed.
We have a, a little bit more delicate parking area now than we had before. There's actually some things we'd like to avoid tearing up, right?
Right, well, that's what the discussion, and the other part of the discussion was, there's so much area, can we really do it with a hand?
Right.
With a hand, you know...
Especially the plaza.
A hand snow blower, a snow thrower versus a, a one that you can drive. Because there's so much space up here to clear the snow now. It's much different than, and I know Mr. Prisco was very helpful last year.
He was, again, this year.
He brought up his own, this year, he brought up his own equipment to help us. And we may, you know, that may be something we have to look at, that kind of piece of equipment.
I think you can bet on that being at least an item that we bring to you to consider as you adopt the capital improvements plan.
Right.
For the school department is a piece of equipment that would allow us to, to deal with, as you said, Cliff, the more delicate, you know, areas that we have now and to be able to clear the building site, this building site properly.
So do we have like a Bobcat?
That's the, that's the idea of a machine, that it's kind of a multi-function machine that we're looking at to bring to the Capital Improvements Planning Committee through you. It's, it's, it's better than a Bobcat. It's more functional than that because either are attachments that you can purchase to, that make it a sweeper, snow blower, snow thrower type thing, as well as the Bob, you know, the Bobcat-style kind of little plow, so... It's kind of a multi, I think they call it like a multipurpose, multifunctional type, you know, utility kind of vehicle, so... But, yeah, as Mel, Mr. Webster said, Selectman Prisco owns one of these for his business and he's brought it up twice now for our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, directed, supervisor to look at, yeah. And actually drive, and it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's what we need.
Very cool.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Upcoming meetings, the SSBC will meet tomorrow night, August twenty-fifth, at five-thirty here in the Distance Learning Lab. The Policy Subcommittee Meeting will meet on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, at one P.M. NORCAM to meet Thursday, the twenty-seventh, excuse me, tentatively, at seven P.M. here.
No, no, it's at Damon, at NORCAM, at the Damon Tavern.
And then the Athletic Subcommittee to meet September twenty-second at twelve-thirty P.M. And with that, we'll go into the administrative report.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. So a few things to update you on and some to kind of restate. The first is, it was mentioned just a moment ago, but the Little School Roof Restoration Project, the project that we're looking at to partner with the MSBA. I'm happy to tell you that all of our requisite documents for the MSBA that were due by September fourth have been, have been submitted. I have to thank Michael and our Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Wayne Hardiker, for their work with me in compiling what needed to be submitted. And we've also enjoyed very good support from our Finance Committee, from our Town Administrator and the Town's Finance Director. And I'm very grateful for that as well. So I think we're in a good place. We anticipate being assigned a project manager for the project. It could be as early as the end of this month, but it might be, but actually, I'm sorry, in your report, you read early September, not early July. But sometime very soon, we expect that we're going to be assigned somebody to, to work with us through the feasibility study, ultimately determine a cost, ultimately determine the nature of the project, what the cost would be. And then the reimbursement with the MSBA is at forty-six point five eight percent and we would, we would be on the town meeting warrant for October fifth for the remaining, remaining funds. And I'll talk about that through a correspondence item in just a moment. The second item I have is, is just a restatement of some of the important dates that I've shared with you for the last couple of meetings coming up as we open the school year. Just a reminder for, for the committee that tomorrow, the new teacher, at the bottom of your page, one, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth is the New Teacher Orientation Program and you are invited to stop by here at about twelve-thirty if your schedule allows. We'd love to see you and could say a little word to the new teachers. Again, I know you are all, all obligated, you know, here and there and you may not be able to, but if you, if your schedule allows, please stop by. Similarly, the new teacher, excuse me, the welcome back for all faculty and staff to open the school year is on Tuesday, September eighth. We will have an informal hour at seven, beginning at seven-thirty in the morning, but the formal presentation will start in the Performing Arts Center for the Middle High School at eight-thirty. And I'm hoping that you can all, can all attend that. And it's, that program, portion of the program will probably be somewhere around an hour to an hour and a half. Just back, if I could, the attachments to the report are, again, just for your information, the two-day schedule for the New Teacher Orientation, just to kind of give you an overview of the kinds of things that they're going to be introduced to on, on tomorrow and Wednesday. I've had an opportunity to tour two of our three elementary schools kind of for an in-depth tour with, with our Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Wayne Hardiker. I visited the Little School and the Hood School. And will visit tomorrow at two o'clock, the Batch Elder School for, like I said, kind of an in-depth tour with Wayne and the custodial staff to just, you know, see the work that's been done over the course of the summer and just to be, be assured, as I, as I, as I am already, and I know I will be with the Batch Elder School tomorrow, assured that, that our schools will be in tip-top shape to, to receive students and staff in the next couple of weeks. People will be coming into the schools to ready their classrooms, teachers will be. And we have orientation programs going on, as you know, at the Middle and High School. Obviously, I'm touring the Middle High School daily. It's been where I'm working out of this building, but it's been, it's been a good summer. People have worked very hard. I cannot say enough about our, our Buildings and Grounds staff, you know, under the leadership of Wayne Hardiker. But the schools really, they look so good and folks take such pride in their work. And I'm very thankful to all of them that, that, that work very, very diligently to make sure that our schools are, you know, in the words of Wayne, clean, safe, warm and dry all the time. He does a nice job and his crew really is, is to be commended for that, so... That's, that's my superintendent's report to you. There are...
Just wondering.
Sure.
Is there any way we can get some of these dates on that district calendar on the website?
I think so, yeah.
Particularly like the middle school orientation?
Good idea.
I think so.
Just because parents have been asking.
Mm-hmm.
And I kind of want to direct them to one particular place.
Yeah, we can do that.
Wayne will have to change his little saying a little bit. Not only warm and dry, but...
Cool and dry.
Cool and dry in the summer.
Tepid?
Cool and dry in the summer, I like that question.
Been pretty good this year.
It has. It's been nice to have, believe me. It's been very nice to have. I have a couple of pieces of correspondence in your packet. One is just an updated meeting schedule for all of you. I, based upon some new information, some requests of the committee, I've updated the schedule. We also moved a, the Hood School Presentation to March twenty-first so that we could have the preliminary budget presentation on March seventh. And I think the only other changes were to the September fourteenth meeting, the presentation on the Capital Improvements Plan. And also, I think it's been two, or it will be two years since you were provided with a, kind of an overview of the unfunded mandates and the cost of the district. So I've spoken to Michael about that and we've tentatively scheduled that for November thirtieth to just give you a little, you and the community, an overview on, on what the cost of the district is, you know, given our best estimates. The next item in your packet is the copy of the, the article in the vote language for the town meeting warrant pursuant to the Little School Roof Project. So again, that's just for your information to know that we have, we have submitted prior to the deadline, the warrant article for this project. So that's just a copy of the letter that I sent to the Town Administrator, Michael Gilberto. And similarly, the next piece of correspondence, you might remember at the last meeting, we had been asked, the school department had been asked by the Town Administrator, through, by the Board of Selectmen, through the Town Administrator, if we wished to express any interest in the Governor's, Governor Baker's Community Compact Cabinet Initiative. So I just, I think we talked about that at the last meeting. We talked about the finance planning teamwork that goes on in North Reading and also the, the interest that we have in, in the Chapter Seventy Funding Formula. So I, this is the letter that I sent to the Town Administrator to just, to, to, to express the school department's interest that he could then convey to, to the, to the State House.
I think the finance planning team is a best practice that every community in the state should follow.
I will tell you, interesting that you bring that up. The Town Administrator and I spoke today about, about this. And he, in his contact at the State House, when he learned a little bit more from Michael about what our, our finance planning team is, made a comment to that effect, that, you know, he, he thought that other communities would benefit from such, such a kind of a collaborative approach to budget, budget processes municipally and the school department. And so while we might be looking at it, you know, I don't know that it's necessarily an area where we think we need to enhance things. We, I think we're looking at it as a way in which we can use that vehicle that we think works very well to maybe lend support to the idea that, you know, there may be a need for change or there is a need for change in the Chapter Seventy Funding Formula.
It doesn't get everybody everything they want, but it certainly lets everybody put everything on the table and makes negotiations for budgets a lot easier and everybody understands...
It's very transparent.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Selectmen know what the school committee is looking for, the school committee knows what the Selectmen is looking for.
Finance committee.
You know how much money there is, right? And the finance committees are too, so, and it's just...
Mel and I have touted that on the lists of M.A.S.C. lists are on several occasions and, you know, we don't get a lot of response.
It doesn't sound like anybody else has one.
No, it seems that way. And, and it's usually when we're touting it, it's because somebody's having some sort of a war with their Selectmen and they can't, can't agree on anything and nobody understands anybody else's position. And they don't trust each other.
Right.
And all of those things are taken care of with the...
I agree. And then lastly, I just, I included in your packet a copy of a recent communication that I had sent out to all families and, and staff across the district. It's kind of a, you know, summer update, if you will, of just some initiatives that have been going on over the summer and to just alert folks to that. And so I got some nice feedback on it and I think people see that, you know, there's a great deal of excitement around the new school year. There's a great deal of excitement around our new middle school, joining our, our high school and, and just some good, some good work going across, going on across the district that helped me to communicate out to people. So I just wanted you to have a copy of that letter. And that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
All right. I just wanted to take a minute before we go into the future business. When I opened the meeting earlier and I asked for public input, there was no one here, but I do see a gentleman sitting, so I want to acknowledge that you're here and if you have anything you would like to say.
I have one question. Correspondence, we were just talking about, is that posted on the schools website?
It's not. But I will, I like that. It's a good idea, yeah. I post my newsletters there, but this was just a standard letter, but I, I, yeah.
It's actually a good idea.
It is a good idea, yeah. I can do it under the, it'll be under the District News tab.
Excellent. Great suggestion.
Thank you. I just had one request. If Mr. Conley could talk briefly about some of the bus questions that we've gotten, some, got from parents?
Sure. So we have gotten a number of questions or that's been forwarded through the school committee to my, my direction. And some of them are in regards to bus routes and the formulation of bus routes and kind of what goes into that and some of the factors at play. And there are some specific areas that we've, some residents in certain areas have expressed some concerns or some requests that I will, I think it's fair to say we are reviewing all those requests, certainly taking them certainly under consideration and, and in many cases have made changes to our bus routes that will, a couple of them will be adding routes to high school or middle school bus, bus runs that may have not had many stops that, at the elementary level, for whatever reason, in certain neighborhoods and certain areas across town. So I've asked Linda Mazzola, who is sort of the Bus Pass Bus Route, you know, Coordinator, to take those under advisement in, in the construction of the bus routes this year. So we've met throughout the summer, certainly Mr. Menard and I have been in touch on many of them. And I think a lot of them certainly made sense to do that from a, a safety and so, and so forth. So we are, we are making some, some changes and modifications at, at some of the bus runs and so forth, adding some stops. So that is, that is all in the works. I will say the bus routes will be finalized this week. They will be sent to the transcript by the end of this week and I expect that they're going to run in a week from Thursday. I believe it is September third. The bus routes for next year will be published in the, in the transcript and they'll be posted on our website probably before then, probably early next week. There's also some other areas that we are, have had some questions on in, I believe it is the Dogwood Lane, Adams Street area in terms of, you know, bus service and can it, bus service extend into that neighborhood? And we are working with our Public Safety, you know, certainly Department to look into that area and we're certainly taking everything under advisement and researching all available options at this time.
Great, thank you.
Could you, could you also address, I know Julie's been good enough to, through social media, address some of the questions on the credit card fees.
Credit card, the fees.
I, I think if you could address that publicly too, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. So, so parents have, you know, many, many options in terms of how they pay for the bus fee or all fees across the district. They certainly, we offer an online payment service that parents can connect directly through our website. It's certainly not required that parents pay online. They can always submit, you know, a check directly to the, to the office. And the online payment, you know, center is available. It does come with a convenience fee on a sliding scale basis. So the higher the, the amount, you know, may, may be the higher the convenience fee you will pay. The, the service that we use is with Unibank, which is the same service that all the town, town uses. The fees that are, are assessed on the sliding scale basis are, are standard fees. So, but it is, it is based on a sliding scale, which can be accessed directly on our website if parents are curious on what their fee may be for a certain, you know, check or payment. They can go on and view that sliding scale and, and sort of understand what that may be. The fees are less if it's paid through a debit card. I believe it's a fixed amount in the two fifty to three-dollar range. So it's a less of a fee that you, that parents would be assessed.
Regardless of the size of the transaction?
Regardless of the size.
Wow.
And there is an electronic check option available as well and that fee is only twenty-five cents. So by supplying your, you know, bank account number and ABA number and routing number, the fee is only twenty-five cents. So it'd be great if there were no fees. That's not a reality for us at the moment.